...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You remain standing for a moment of silence, please.
Thank you. At this time, there's public comments. Does anyone have a public comment? And if you do, if you would go to the microphone, give your name, and let us know if you're a township resident.
My name is Arloa Kaiser. I'm a township resident. And my concern is St. Mark's Lutheran Church, which has been sold to Peace Neighborhood. And the free store is just kind of given a week or two notice and nothing consistent that they know how long they're going to be there. And I don't think that's very good for our neighborhood. They are doing such good work there. It's to anybody that doesn't know what it is. It's like a garage sale, except that everything is free. It is taken on donations. And now Peace Neighborhood from Ann Arbor has supposedly purchased the what was St. Mark's Lutheran Church, and they are kicking these people out of there, which I think is a shame. But they don't say, well, as of such and such a date, this is when it's going to happen. They say, well, we think it's going to be two weeks, three weeks, whatever. I don't think that's right to the neighborhood. And it is a shame that, you know, we as a group cannot find a place where this Shawnee can have her free store. That I know it takes up a bunch of space. I know everybody is trying to help her. They don't have money to pay for it. But I would ask anyone to help that might know of a place that would have a good-sized space where they could have this free store. It helps everyone. No questions asked. You come in, they give you a bag, help yourself to whatever you want. And a lot of times, they have food outside in like a locker that is donations also. People come and help themselves. So I appreciate all your help. And I know you already have tried to help as much, but still continue to ask for help.
Thank you, Ms. Kaiser. And thank you for your petition efforts on that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Sharon Lee. I'm a township resident. My concern is US 12 going east, the Service Drive. There's a fence that I was part of getting that completed, the traffic committee. But my concern is the fence, the green fence fencing that looks like grass, it's coming off of the fencing. And I don't know who to contact to get that repaired. So if you can let me know who to contact to get that repaired. And if the township is responsible for repairs or the road commissioner, I don't know.
Yeah. We'll follow up on that. Treasure Aldridge will send an email to the contractor because it shouldn't have come a car.
No, it should still be warranted. And I'll get you my email and I'll connect, but I'll make sure I take care of it first thing in the morning.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments?
Hi, my name is Mia. I am a resident of the township in the Nancy Park area. And my comment today is a request for regular tree trimming services as maintenance for residents, as well as a more robust brush removal services following winter storms like the one that we had back on the 22nd. My neighbor had an enormous branch on his tree, and the tree is in the easement, not on his private property, that was hanging into his lawn and near his house and over his fence. I called Residential Services to ask if the city provided complimentary or any kind of regular tree trimming services. But after contacting the county road commission, I was told that no one would come to assist with the branch that was dangling because it wasn't directly blocking the road. And unfortunately, because my neighbor doesn't have, you know, buckets of money to, you know, throw at problems like this after storms especially, he ended up climbing the tree himself with a chainsaw so that he could remove the branch because he was concerned it would fall in the yard when his children are playing. So I'm really here to urge that we would have more resources available to residents, especially as storms like this can potentially become more severe and more regular. Frankly, I was speaking to one of my neighbors who's been a Nancy Park resident since 1960, and she was, you know, kind of saying that these sorts of services for residents have been defunded and reduced over the years, leading to the kind of extreme circumstances that happened after the storm on the 22nd. So, you know, and in addition to tree trimming services, there's still brush all around the Nancy Park neighborhood. I live off of Andrea Street specifically, right off of Harry. But I feel like the neighbors have done their jobs to have everything prepared for whoever's going to come by with the chipper. But if somebody came by, we wouldn't know because there's still just piles of brush lying around. And people have done their due diligence, and I just hope that the township would then do theirs in response. Overall, I am just concerned if another storm like this were to happen, if there aren't regular services for the trees in the area, that power will go out when it doesn't need to, that people's property will be damaged. And this poses a risk to children and residents in the area as well. If in the past, there have been more robust services like this, I see a precedent for us to return to those kinds of services and practices. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you could get, if there's a specific address where people need assistance like that, we have a resource person that we can help connect them to services. And I don't want to sound defensive, but I would like to defend our employees. March 6th is the day they started. After March 6th, there was, what, five inches of snow? There was another ice storm. There were, I mean, it seems like there was delay after delay. And we did deploy two chipper trucks. Then we brought seasonal workers in to assist. It's a very high employee injury profession to be in, especially if you don't, that's not your profession. We also contracted for another contractor to come in. So we have three going. That storm was so unique. There's some areas that, and I attempted to participate in the chipping. It's very, very labor intensive. We did not, it was six hours, we did not get one street done, not to the end of one street. So please be patient, and I'm sorry for the delay, but I just want you to know, it's not because we're not trying. And they're doing it based on, they started in Recycle B, Recycle B Route. So that's where they started, and they, they're just trying to make it their way. The contractor is working on Saturdays. Our employees cannot do Saturdays. It's just too physical to do. And Nancy Park has a lot of beautiful trees too. So I'm, you know, I under, I do understand, and I'm sorry that that's occurring. I'm sorry to the community, but I do want the residents to know and our board to know how hard our employees are working on it. We did have a chipping service. It was for limbs. It wasn't for tree, it was never for tree removal. So, and because of injuries to our people, we stopped doing that service. And it was during COVID as well. So we're trying to look at, we did get a quote, and it was $150 per stop for every resident. And there's 15,000 parcels, so do the math. Special storms, we said we would try our best. I would not recommend that our people do it the next time, that we completely contract out on chipping and trim, you know. It's a lot. I know there's a lot in your area, but if you drive around the township, it's 32 square miles, over 300 miles of roads. It's, we're not a small community, and we're, I promise you, they are trying their very best to help remove the branches. So hopefully, they're on a, they've been on a good run since the weather broke. And we, we'll get there. We have to get into the parks next and open up the compost site, so we will, we will be there. And on the agenda is $50,000 to hire a contractor to assist. I don't think it's going to be enough based on how far they're getting in the amount of, you know, complete tree removal is being put out. And I don't blame residents, and I'm glad that we're able and are trying to do it, but just please express to your neighbors. And we're telling Neighborhood Watch that I, we will be there.
I, yeah, no, I understand, and it's good to know that there's, you know, money set aside or money that's being considered for contracting work like that. If anything, I would absolutely express my support for money being used for further contractors or to bring in further support for issues like this.
Thank you.
And, you know, in defense or rather supportive of the workers as well, you know, I'm, I understand that, you know, working with the chippers is dangerous work, and I wouldn't want anybody to be subjected to work that is dangerous or dangerous working conditions, you know. I'm, you know, that's just always unacceptable. But I think that speaks further to the need to increase the number of workers that involved, rather than to say, we need, you know, the same number of workers to then just be taking on dangerous work. Oh, to the point, I suppose, of continuing to set aside funds to bring in contractors or to bring in additional workers to service these kinds of issues. And for whatever it's worth, when I did call Residential Services, everyone who I've spoke to before this meeting that brought me here today has been very helpful, very kind, very professional and courteous. Though there were some individuals that expressed, you know, I wish there was more I could tell you, more places I could direct you to, but this just really isn't, you know, besides this, there really aren't any further residential services I can direct you to. So I guess, you know, kind of running off of their words, I would hope that more residential services could be set aside for situations like this. And, you know, I grew up in northern Minnesota, so ice storms, snowstorms, five feet of snow falling overnight, you know, it happens. So it's frankly hard for me to believe that a half to a quarter inch of ice on some branches would be some kind of history, you know, breaking storm or something like that. And if something worse were to even happen, it just makes me very concerned that if this is the capacity we've set aside to deal with emergencies, I feel like we would be desperately underprepared, underprepared for worse if it were to happen. And ultimately, I know DTE is supposed to provide tree trimming services. But as long as DTE continues to abandon their customers and continues to not provide, you know, resources to us, then we got to come to you, you know. And, you know, to close off, I guess, I know that the county commissioners have recently voiced support for public municipal power due to DTE's negligence. And I just hope that the township would stand in support of that as well, because ultimately I would, you know, would, it would hate to not, I don't want to have to come to you guys with these kinds of requests if there is a different entity who's ultimately could be more responsive upfront.
Thank you. Thank you for attending. Are there any other public comments?
Thank you. My name's Ken McGee. I'm introducing myself to you as well as the individuals in the room here. I'm a candidate for sheriff for the August 2024 primary here in Washtenaw County. I am a Washtenaw County resident. I wanted to come out here and introduce myself to everyone and explain just a few things, my background. I come from over 30 years of law enforcement. I was a patrol officer at one time in Jackson, Michigan. I was a federal agent, traveled around the world, fighting crime in a variety of different ways, ranging from working overseas in South America on the Pablo Escobar investigating, investigation to combating methamphetamine labs in the, in the Pacific Northwest. I come with a ton of experience that I'm looking forward to sharing with everyone later on. People ask, why am I running for sheriff? I'm concerned about the direction that Sheriff's Office is taking. I'm concerned about some of the things that I've seen in the past that haven't been addressed, such as the opioid epidemic crisis that's killed over 78 people in our county alone in the last year, to include marginalized communities and a disproportionate amount of people dying. I'm concerned about that. I come from a background of drug enforcement in a lot of strategic ways, but I also lost a family member to a heroin overdose. So I know what it's like to be a family member attacking this problem as well as a professional law enforcement officer. I'm concerned about runaways in our community. I'm concerned about holding leadership at the law enforcement agencies to the highest level levels. I see some concerns, and many of those I can address later on in different platforms. But I, again, wanted to introduce myself as to who I am, what I represent, a little bit about my background, and I look forward to meeting with any of you at any time or anyone in this room at any time. And thank you very much for your time. I think my three minutes are about up. I appreciate everything.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McGee. Is everyone, any other public comment? Hearing none, we'll go, oh, I'm sorry.
My name is Shabaka Indulakulu. This is my first time at one of these meetings. I want to know how the board is picked, and isn't it supposed to be a free and open election instead of being appointed by one of the board members? And what's the requirements for being a board member? And I don't know how you guys get paid to do your job in order to make sure I understand how the process works. Just three simple questions.
We're elected, just like school board is elected and county commissioners and state reps were elected. It's a four-year term. If someone resigns, then we appoint someone to fill that vacancy if it's after two years.
When are the elections?
I'm sorry?
When are the elections?
The election is every four years. The previous election was in 2020, so 2024 is the next election. August is a primary, November is a general election. Thank you. Are there any other public comment? Hearing none, we'll go to the consent agenda, which is a minutes of the March 7th work session and regular meeting, statements and checks, and the treasures report for February of 2023.
So move.
Support.
Motion, row. Support Aldridge. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The next item is the attorney's report. Are you going to wait for the Galt Village, Mr. Winters?
Sure, I'm going to defer my report this evening because I know the, everybody involved with the Galt Village demolition project has been waiting patiently for the last couple of hours, and I think that their presentation and recommendation and ultimate board action would supersede my report this evening.
All right. Thank you. Under new business, we have the request to award the bid for the demolition of Galt Village to Hamridge Inc.
So move.
Support.
Motion, row. Support Aldridge. Who's going to give a, Mr. McLean?
Good evening, Township Board of Trustees, Jason Icoangeli, the Township's planning director. In your packet, you'll find a letter that came from my desk as well as Dave Beller's desk regarding the continued efforts of the township working with McLean and Winters and this ongoing litigation regarding the Galt Village Shopping Center. And also specifically mentioning our consultant who's been helping us in this process, SME. The township, where we last left off at the last meeting when this team was here to speak with you last time, was when the board was reviewing SME's proposal to prepare the hazardous materials assessment just before the holiday season last winter. And that is the environmental due diligence work that's required per the state and the federal law to be done prior to the demolition of a structure. And so that work was done with your help and the approval. SME was able to do that work in December of 2022 and January of 2023. The assessment was done where consultants from SME were able to get into the shopping center and do the environmental testing that was required and approved by the EPA on December 8th of 2022. And the assessment that was performed was done in order to evaluate and identify the existing, the existence of asbestos-containing material, potential lead-bearing and cadmium-bearing paints, and other regulated materials and universal waste items prior to demolition. And during that time, after the, the, the conclusion of that hazardous material assessment was in fact that there is asbestos-containing materials or ACMs inside of the Galt Village Shopping Center, specifically the floor tile that was used in the building. And so that information was taken, a hazardous materials assessment was put together, and I'll let Jason from SME, Jason Lafayette from SME, speak more on that. But a report was put together that was then shared with the original six companies that had responded to giving the township an initial bid back in around August of 2022. And that assessment also was given to them with an addendum of some other considerations regarding the bid specifications that the township would be looking for for the demolition of the shopping center. So as you can imagine, they had to take into account how they would abate and remove this material, where it would need to be properly disposed, and come up with some of the logistics, and then come up with a final number for how much the cost would be for both the environmental remediation and the demolition of the building itself. And so the conclusion of that in summary is that Hamridge Inc. was the lowest bidder after receiving the addendum and the hazardous materials assessment. Hamridge Inc. responded with a final bid consideration of $587,000 for both the removal of the asbestos material and the demolition of the structure. Hamridge provided the township with all of the bid document items that were requested as a part of the addendum that was prepared by SME. However, the only condition that they weren't specifically able to meet was that the contract or the work schedule specified was 60 calendar days, and their timeline for completion is 94 days. However, if you look specifically at the timeline that was submitted by them, the actual demolition process or the time it takes to remove the building is about 60 days. There's about 30 additional days, both at the front end and the back end of that process that are required for the remediation, setting up the fencing, providing the utility cutoffs because the utilities will need to be stubbed off or shut off so that, you know, the, the site is left, you know, without water and sewer for the time being. Those things have to be bulk headed off from, from where the building is at currently. And so we believe in, after review of that, that the additional time that they're asking as a part of their timeframe is acceptable based on the actual cost that they had provided for doing this work. It was substantially lower than any of the other contractors that, that you'll see on that bid tabulation sheet that was also included. And then finally, Hamridge is, as I noted in my memo, they're probably one of the largest demolition companies in the state of Michigan, if not in the Midwest, and they do a lot of very high priority jobs, including the Packard Plant, asbestos remediation at Joe Lewis Arena, and locally, they removed the old press box at the Big House for the University of Michigan. So they're a highly regarded company in the line of work that they do. And so to that end, as far as the planning department and building department, we agree with SME and their conclusion that, that Hamridge would be what we would recommend to the board as a suitable contractor for performing the duties involved with the remediation of the asbestos, and then finally with demoing, demoing the building itself. And then Jason, I don't know if you want to add any additional information as sort of to piggyback on our effort?
Good evening, Jason Lafayette with SAB. To elaborate on Mr. Icoangeli's summary, some considerations with, with the bid. Each of these contractors were pre-qualified as part of the bid process. They were actually invited for the bids. Each that SME has worked with on a multitude of projects in the past with great success on these projects. So in evaluating the bids for this project, really I looked at, broke down to the overall bid, some considerations of unit rates that we like to include that in the event that other additional quantities, other materials are identified during the demolition process so that you have fixed unit rates for each of those. And then also the other requirements, the township requirements as part of the bid process, the bid bond, work plan, schedule, specific insurance requirements and the like. Based on the comprehensive evaluation of that, as Mr. Michael Icoangeli stated, Hamridge qualified in each of these departments with the exception of the schedule, which was elevated above that 60-day initial work requirement. So otherwise, that not being a major priority for the township, we consider that to be the most favorable bid in this process. Are there any questions specifically about the logistics of abatement and demolition necessary for the scope?
Trustee Swanson?
So looking at the, the, I don't know what you would call it, like there were the whole guidelines of things. One of the things they said is they asked to not have to fence the whole thing in, that they would fence it and they would move it. And is that something that we're agreeable to?
So yes, it is. There's, there's a minimum requirement that the, the fence be erected to the parcel boundary so that the, the site's protected, there's no fencing being erected on property that's not specific to this parcel. As far as being able to limit the fencing to a lesser quantity than that, we addressed that at the, the pre-bid and in the agenda, that if the contractor could use less fencing but still secure the site during the duration of the project, that's acceptable as part of the project, enough to allow trucking egress, obviously, for disposal of waste and other materials and protect the site. So the contractors understand as part of this process, once they are awarded the contract, they assume responsibility for site security throughout the duration of the project.
Okay. Because it looked like it was like, I don't know whether it was cost savings or what it was, but I didn't know, like, we were just looking at what they're requesting. I didn't know, like, do you guys get back with them and you say, yeah, we'll do this, no, we won't do that? And then I think another one was like, they have to tell where they're going to dispose the materials. It sounded like they have to say which landfill. They didn't identify it in that, but that just goes, happens, like, if they're awarded it, then they have to make sure that that's on file, the record of where it's going, I'm guessing. Because there were a lot of things that were kind of, this has to happen, this doesn't have the township wants that, and we don't see it because it's still, those decisions are still being made. But then they, you meet with them, Jason, and that's how that gets resolved?
Well, I mean, I think to the question about, so like the questions for the hazardous material, like where it's going to go, they provided us with where their company typically disposes of the material, and it's based usually on the shortest distance of travel. So I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Hamridge outlined two disposal, two landfills that they would be utilizing as a part of their, their effort to remove Galt Village. And then further, we even specified what route we would prefer that they take with their trucks as they, they, they get this material offsite. So we, we had told them that it would be our preference that the truck traffic use Grove Road directly to Rossenville to I-94. Because I believe that some of the waste stream is actually going to go to Wayne disposal, that landfill that's just over the border in Van Buren Township.
It looked like we required manifesto or something like, it looks like we're looking for proof that that waste goes someplace for our records?
Yeah, it's, that's a great question. And so as part of the project documentation process, there's really three components. The first component are those documents that are required as part of the bid prior to contract award. And then if that's satisfactory to the township and the board, the project is awarded to a contractor contingent upon all the other necessary project documentation. to a contractor contingent upon all the other necessary, uh, project documentation to begin work. And that would include other things like a payment bond, a performance bond, um, identification of the landfills of use, submittal of all contractor training requirement, licensing, things of that nature, um, and, and then any other shortfalls of the bid if identified before that, that, um, the contract would actually be executed and the work performed. Then after the project is completed, as part of a payment requirement for the contractor, there's closeout documentation for the project, and that would include things like the disposal manifest that you mentioned, any type of, uh, recycling bills of relating, um, the, uh, abatement protocols, how the work was performed, the people performing the work, and then, um, also air clearance, uh, different air monitoring and other project monitoring that would be performed during the project. So all of those things would come together at the end of the project.
Okay, so I have two more. One was when we first, when you guys first came and talked to us, we were looking at possibly having a little bit of a discount because of the timing of the work. Did we miss that opportunity?
I don't think so. We didn't really see a, a large shift in the bids, so that was pretty favorable. And as a matter of fact, um, some of the scope was, was eliminated by that the, uh, the concrete slab in the parking lot, the lights, things of that nature were taken out of the overarching scope of the project. But I'd say apples to apples, they're still, um, very comparable bids and pretty favorable.
Okay, and then hopefully, last question. The other question is, um, I, because of the timing, like the way I'm looking, and it's looking like as fast as we could do this, if we got it going by the end of March or some kind of agreement, like 90 days is gonna take us into June. So what about, like, like how did, I got in and see anything in what I read, maybe it was there. You guys know the stuff, like how this works, but like, I'm worried about, like, what about dusts and stuff, because it's so close to homes? Like what do they do when they're demolishing and it's gonna make, well, it's gonna help with making sure that, um, dust and those other things are not gonna be a problem for residents?
Yes, as part of the, uh, the project specifications, we have specific dust suppression requirements, uh, metrics for reducing dust and monitoring those dust levels, as well as other contaminants that might be present in buildings, like, um, asbestos, um, uh, lead, cadmium, things of that nature. So, um, it's, it's separate from this, but, um, the, as specified, the, the township and the board, um, have the right to retain a third-party consultant to perform those monitoring activities, and the contractor themselves are responsible for that dust suppression during the project.
We made a decision about, like, is there a recommendation about this third-party having somebody monitoring this?
Well, I think based on the nature of this project, we would be, you know, our recommendation would be to continue to rely on SME to provide the continued environmental services through the demolition portion of this project. So they've taken it from the very beginning through the environmental, uh, required environmental, uh, assessments, and then it would be our recommendation that they continue to then be on-site during the demolition and abatement process and provide all of these, the required services, like the dust abatement monitoring, air quality monitoring, and then also, you know, the site supervision while this process is occurring.
So if we're asked to take action, will that be, I want that, I prefer that to be a simultaneous decision so that I know that if we're approving demolition, that we know we've got that third-party. I think I would feel more comfortable if there was a third-party involved, but I don't want to do one thing and agree and then have the other thing not happen depending on the vote. And I'm not saying that that would happen, but I just want to make sure that those are brought at the same time so that we can make a decision about that.
So it's our, based on just the timing of this, that we're bringing this component to you as one piece, and then it's our, our intention, and we've already spoken about having another separate contract, uh, drafted by SME to provide the environmental services component, uh, that we feel that we need, uh, to have the expertise on-site to then watch this process through to the end, uh, through, through, uh, the, uh, abatement and then the demolition of the building itself.
Is it environmental services or construction slash demolition oversight?
You know, I, I'm not sure what, what the technical terminology would be for it, but yeah, SME would be, yeah, they would be providing, I, I call it construction services. I mean, it may be, you know, environmental.
Yeah.
I don't know. What would you folks call it?
That'll come back to the board.
It will. So that's gonna be SME and Jason are already trying to work to prepare a separate scope of work and contract for them to provide the environmental, uh, services.
Construction.
Yes, the, uh, inspection, environmental inspection and construction monitoring, for lack of a better term.
And I know this is how we do it often with OHM. We award the bid and then.
That's right.
There's construction, and this is, um, demolition. This is a little bit, um, different terminology, so.
Right, so it's.
That'll come back to the board is what I hear. And, um, Denny, perhaps you could explain the process. So we're, the township board is authorizing to enter into an agreement tonight. It goes back to court, and the judge is giving the owner one last time, um, to try to retain funding and their own grants, right? It's one, this is a last time.
If I, if I can just, um, explain, last Friday, we attended a review hearing before Judge Kunkie, myself, uh, Dave Bellers and, uh, Tom Greenwood. And at that hearing, um, I advised Judge Kunkie, and Mr. Lafayette testified as to what he was recommending, the bid that he was recommending and why, and she's aware of that, and she's essentially on board with that. But she wanted to adjourn the matter two weeks to allow the board the opportunity to, um, accept the Homrich bid. And in two weeks from, from now, she will decide on a motion that I filed regarding specific details of how the process is gonna be executed down the road, including whether or not we're going to be able to demolish the two existing signs. Mr. Hall wants to keep the signs for future redevelopment. Um, Dave Bellers has filed an NOV, Notice of Violation, um, based on his opinion that the structural integrity of the signs is, uh, in, in bad shape, they're in distress. Judge Kunkie said, well, I'll reserve my ruling on the signs until two weeks from now, and I want both sides to obtain some kind of expert, uh, opinion as to their structural integrity for one. Number two, my second argument was that they're structures and that the demolition order of 2016 specifically said all structures. So she'll have the choice to either, depending on what the, um, structural engineer says, uh, maybe, maybe they're not in such distress that they're gonna fall over tomorrow, but she also has to decide whether I'm correct in my argument that they are structures to be included in the demolition. Interestingly, uh, Mr. Hall, for the first time, through his attorney, indicated he would now cooperate with signing any documents that were necessary to obtain financing, to, um, uh, assist in the, uh, process of approving, you know, dump, disposition of the hazardous materials and, and what have you. I indicated to the court, I, I, I would not trust Mr. Hall to do any of that voluntarily, despite what he says. Ironically, just to show you where Judge Kunkie's state of mind is, uh, Mr. Reynolds, Hall's attorney, once again stated, of course, you know, Judge, my client still is of the opinion that he should be able to rehabilitate this mall. And Judge Kunkie didn't hesitate in responding, "That horse has left the barn." That was her exact language. So she's on board with what the township is doing. Uh, she just wants to be sure that she's being fair to Mr. Hall, and also at the same time, she has clearly indicated that this, this is going forward, and, uh, she just wanted to hear that the township board was supportive of awarding the bid to Homrich, who, by the way, it's my understanding that they don't use subcontractors. They use all their own employees. So you avoid that whole process of signed waivers and the like. And they're a very well-respected company, like Jason said, the, the Packard Plant was an amazing project, and Joe Lewis Arena was, was, uh, no slouch either, so.
So if, um, did Mr. Hall get the opportunity to apply for grants or try to get other?
She gave him the, these two weeks to come back and say, okay, this is what I've found out and what I'd like to do, but I, I said, in no uncertain terms, we are not gonna delay moving forward with this demolition regardless of whether he comes in and wants to apply for some grant or some financing. We're, we, we, we want the board to move forward with it. We've spent enough time and, uh, years getting to this point.
And trying to get the owner to comply, you know, that was the goal is to.
We gave Mr. Hall five years, five years to come through. He submitted one plan back in, I think it was November 2018 or whatever, and he accomplished next to zero of it, which is then resulted in, in Dave Bellers issuing his 2019 demo order, and the rest, as they say, is history. And I also reminded Judge Kunkie that on March 12th of, of 2021, her predecessor, Judge Brown issued an order declaring the mall unsafe and a hazard, public safety, health and welfare hazard, and uninhabitable. So, and that was two years ago. And, uh, so the, the time is right, and I think she, she's behind it, and she appreciates what the township is doing.
Um, Mr. McLean also wants, if it ends up, which it's probably gonna be where the township expends the funds, which is, um, $587,000, which was a great bid, cause the highest one was one point, almost 1.3 million. So that is.
Five years ago, former OCS, five years ago, former OCS Director Razik got a, a bid example of almost, I think it was almost 6 million. That, that was what we were looking at. And so this is really, oh.
And, and, uh, like you said, such a good, um, well-respected company that has a lot of experience. But, um, regardless of that, if the, the township board, the next action is after court, that we have to allocate funds from our fund balance to do this.
We intend to ask the court to issue a, a judicial lien initially, but then order Mr. Hall to reimburse the township within a period of time, and when he doesn't, issue a money judgment against Mr. Hall, which then there's a process for filing a judgment lien against property, and eventually, since GV LLC has no personal property, the, I'm aware of, it just has the property, you have to go after personal property first to collect. When there's no personal property, then you can go after auctioning the real estate, which is ultimately what this may wind up resulting in. So, I mean, we're, we're confident that, that Judge Kunkie will issue the money judgment, the lien. And I'm sure they'll argue over the exact amount, but the bottom line is the 587 is, is, is the, is the basic amount. That doesn't include other items that we believe would be entitled to be reimbursed to also.
I know the residents at the Neighborhood Watch meeting in Galt Village was very, um, concerned and wanted an update on it, and so when we go back, but if we go to West Willow, they ask about it, Sugar Brook, Holmes Row, it does, regardless of where we go, um, residents ask about what is happening to Galt Village. It was such a vibrant, um, commercial district at one time, and there's two owners there. The first owner, um, he demolished half of it, left the slab and the parking lot. So this is the second half, and a new, and a different owner that is gonna have, hopefully, um, demolition. And then we can start at looking at ways, you know, to revigorate and redevelop that site at some point with someone. And I do want, uh, the board members to know, the very first meeting we had with this, um, owner, Mr. Hall, we offered to help get, um, Brownfield redevelopment with Washoe County, and he, he would not have any part of it. I didn't, I never understood why, but he refused to even consider having the Washoe County Redevelopment Authority, um, Brownfield Redevelopment. And they could have done, you know, really worked hard together on making this successful, but he did, he refused to participate in that.
Correct.
And, um, finally, is there, is there like a barrier that's put up, or because it's brick, it just comes forward? Because it is like, um, Trustee Swanson was saying, it's very close to the residents, but I, I, I'm just, I'm not, um, familiar with demolition. Because it's brick and the way it falls and it just comes forward? They said originally it would take like two or three days to actually, once they remove asbestos. Um, they also checked for, um, rodents and any animals in there, and there was not any. You did a report on that as well. And once they remove the asbestos, which is any, um, building after a certain year will have asbestos in the tiles and, or in the ceilings. But once they do that, then it's just demolition where the brick comes down? Is that, I'm, I'm just not, I'm trying to envision it.
They're gonna put a fence around, see if they start with the, I don't know what, Jason, but they're gonna start with the, probably the eastern series of buildings, and they'll fence that. And when they're done with that demolition, and I'm sure they'll have dust control and they'll, they'll have some type of methodology where they'll prevent the asbestos from escaping into the atmosphere.
They're removing the asbestos first before, right?
Maybe Jason could answer that a little better than I can.
So the, the fencing is more of a, a security barrier to prevent unauthorized access to the building and to the, you know, that work area of the site. As far as the removal of the building, the, the, the felling of the building itself, it's somewhat of a surgical process, and contractors use different methods, um, usually heavy machinery to pull it in, pull the building walls inward. Um, you know, that's your concern, the proximity to the retaining wall and also the, you know, the close residents. But, um, you know, this contractor among, you know, uh, each of these contractors, they, they do surgical 20-story buildings that are attached to other buildings. So they're, they're very familiar with this process and, and have the, you know, the work experience to do that safely. But, um, with regard, again, to, to dust and monitoring of suppression of that dust and then monitoring of that, that would all be part of this project to help, you know, raise the comfort level of the, you know, the adjoining residents and also just, you know, protect liability for the township and, uh, and everyone involved.
Is there any reclaiming or reuse of the brick? I assume there's steel, I don't know.
Generally not. You know, there's, there's reclamation, um, steel, um, uh, some of the, uh, refrigerant materials inside of different units, like air, uh, air handlers, air conditioners, things of that nature. So the contractor will reclaim certain value out of the building once they get into it, and, and we offered also to the, um, to the owner, uh, you know, right to salvage any materials that may be of value that are left there inside and outside of the building until the commencement of work. So up until that point, um, to, to come and salvage any value out of the building before the work begins, after that point, the contractor would remove all materials from the site.
One of, one of the things that Jason just alluded to is unbeknownst to us some months, many months ago, uh, when we were dealing with security issues, Mr. Hall bought what essentially was the remnants of a hockey rink from Lansing and had it transported to the Galt Village Mall, and it's fenced in in front of the old Measurements Inc. It actually is all aluminum, it primarily are the hockey boards from the hockey rink. And he was gonna build a wall from the corner of Measurements Inc. all the way across diagonally to the cor, to the northern corner of the mall, and then he was gonna put an eight-foot fence on top of that to prevent access. And it was such, he did, he brought this thing in without anybody's notice or knowledge. And in my motion, one of the things I requested is the judge tell Mr. Hall, either you get rid of that because it has value, or you suffer his loss. I mean, it was just, this is the crazy stuff that this gentleman has, has done. He's inexperienced, he is over his head from the beginning, doesn't have the financing, and, I mean, really, I, I, I think he's, I think he's, he's a dreamer is what I think he is, but that's just my opinion. He just never really had the ability to move forward on this, and he won't admit it, which is why he's been stubborn all the way through.
I think he bought it sight unseen, like it was on the internet and he bought it, and he thought it was the entire property. In a meeting, we. and he thought it was the entire property. In a meeting we had with him, he indicated...
Well, he found out, he found out before he finished the purchase that it didn't include McGlothlin's slip, which is considerably smaller than the mall. But initially, when he was proposing to buy it, he didn't realize that.
Right. That's what he said. I mean, we, I just want, you know, board and public to know that we really tried hard to get this owner to do the right thing. And it's a dangerous building, it's an attractive nuisance. The residents of all that are in direct, right behind them, has suffered greatly all these years with, you know, what's been going on there. And then, of course, if you drive by it, if you walk by it, and that's what occurred at the Neighborhood Watch meeting with Gulf Village. And I, I do believe, and I know, that the residents will be happy. It's sad to take anything down, especially if it's not township property. And, but at the same time, we have an obligation to protect the residents from this. It's a dangerous building. It's, it was collapsing even when they were operating. There was buckets everywhere of water. And the Aco store, Ace Hardware, Aco, was the, I mean, it was the best store. And it was like, they had very good sales there, they were long-term tenants, and it's just, it's really sad, but at the same time, enough is enough, like the judge said. And we, we really tried hard to make the owner do these things, where it's not a government taking, it's a government protection for the community.
The times that Dave Beller's met with, with Mr. Hall to try and show him what he needed to do to get out of the demolition order, I mean, the meetings that were had with him, the opportunities the township gave him, I mean, there's, there's no way he can really, in all honesty, say the township tried to keep him from success.
Mr. Winner?
Madam Chairperson, I, I would be remiss if I didn't just take a moment and just at least not only acknowledge the both Jasons and Dave Beller's, and of course, my law partner, Dennis. But this has involved at one time or another, I think, so many different departments, employees, the full-time officials, going back over prior boards. Jenny and I have been the township attorneys since 1984, and we were practicing before then. But I've never seen, and we're not a, you know, we're a very small law firm, and at the same time, township does not have a great extra abundance of employees to devote to a project of this nature. And that was one reason why, for years, we try our best to work with the property owner. If the board recalls, at one point in time, we even had a court-appointed receiver that came into possession of this property for a while, the former Judge Carl Fink. And rents were paid, and eventually, some of those monies were actually used to put up the retaining wall, because the retaining wall that was there initially was collapsing, and there was a great fear that all the neighbors on, I think Coleman Street, were going to lose their backyard. But for the new retaining wall that actually was built based upon the receiver expenditure of those funds that came in during that time period. And I just can't say enough as to the dedication and the, and the patience of the board, as well as the commitment of all the township employees who were involved in this. And I really believe also that the township was, it was and is very fortunate to have the acumen of Jason Lafayette and SME, who actually was able, I think, to navigate and steer this work. We spent time going over the township's requirements, but I can tell you right now, there's about six, maybe 350 pages, double-sided specifications that were prepared for the bidders to go through. And to reach this point now where you're at, to have a bid that will result in the Homridge name being attached to this demolition, I think it's really a tribute to the team effort of the township and, again, the knowledge and skill of SME led by Jason Lafayette. There's a lot of work that still lies ahead, but I do think right now that the township might take no pleasure in having to demolish a, a building. The bottom line is, the fire department had told us repeatedly, if a fire occurs on this property, we're not going to bother to, we're not going to send people in, we're just going to try and contain the fire. The roof is going to collapse, and we're not going to send firefighters into this building and put them at risk for this building, given its condition. We had people at times that were living in the building. We had numerous situations involving drug activity that resulted in the Sheriff's Department having spent a great deal of time responding to over the years. We had the parking lot, especially the back alley, being used for many people's own private dumping ground, which required the township again and again to remove the blight. We had that area, the alleyway, being used for prostitution even during the daytime. And to the point right now where everything that possibly could have occurred from a dangerous standpoint did occur. And I think in many ways, the township was very, very lucky. They were able to be in a position now to take this building down, given the fact that it's been vacant for as long as it has. It continues to basically become demolition by neglect. And at this point in time, I think that the fact that we're now on the third circuit court judge, because those two judges have retired, that's how long we've been involved in this, just shows exactly that everybody has given the extreme benefit of the doubt to the property owner. At times, somewhat frustrating because it's been done so, in my opinion, at the expense at times of the township residents, keeping in mind that this isn't absentee, not only an absentee landlord, this is a person absent from the state of Michigan who owns this property. It's not even someone local, it's someone in the state. They're a different state, two states away. And so at this point in time, I'm just very, very glad that we were able to connect with Mr. Lafayette and his firm, and again, Dave and Jason and all the ordinance people, and Jenny, the board's patients. This board is a culmination of what many other individuals who set up here have had to also play a part in. So we think eventually there will be a good redevelopment occur over there, hopefully sooner rather than later. And, but at the same time, I just think it's a very, very opportunity to acknowledge everyone who played a tremendous role, I think, in bringing this to the court's attention. Keeping in mind Judge Conkey had to get, was brought up to speed very, very quickly in this case, because when Judge Brown retired, it was a rather sudden retirement. If you recall, we have motions pending before Judge Brown at the time he had to retire. And so we never had a chance to have these orders entered by Judge Brown, who had been very familiar with the case. And I think Judge Conkey's done an outstanding job in bringing in her, her team up to speed as to what's gone on, given the length of this litigation. So I think that we're finally at that point now where we can receive, but thanks to all the team effort of everyone involved.
All right. Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Hearing done. We have a motion in support to award the bid for demolition of Gulf Village to Homridge. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Number two's request to accept...
Do you have one question? So when will the third party, when will that decision come back to us? Because we didn't agree to that right now, right?
My understanding from what they said is that will come back to the next meeting after the judge actually gives a final order. She had requested that the township board accept the contract for the demolition, and then that will come back before proceeding.
Yeah, we anticipate to have that item at your very next board meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, let me sit there. Thank you. Madam Chair, you did the motion, and everybody said yes, or can I just ask a question also, I guess?
Of course.
As far as the costs, could the Apple Funds be part of this and pay for half, and the rest come out of general fund? Is that acceptable?
That could be a discussion at a later date, probably.
A later date?
Yeah.
When, right, when we get the whole contract? Is that what we're saying?
Yes. We were approving the contract or, but we have not allocated any funds yet.
Got you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, sorry, I apologize for out of order. I just wanted to make sure that when we send this memo, are we just sending it to you, Jenny, McLean and Winners, and you'll pass it along to the judge, or? Yeah. Sure. Thank you.
Good question. Any other? So we already actually approved it, and we'll have more conversations at the next meeting regarding this. Number two's request to accept the resignation of Keith Jason from the Ipsilene Community Utilities Board effective April 27, 2023. So, motion, Row, support Eldridge to accept the resignation. Keith Jason has been on there for 10 years. He's very involved with his children, and he has, he works at U of M, but he has a lot of, what do you call, announcers for different athletic events, and I mean, a lot. And he, he's really very, very busy, and his, his kids are at the age that requires him to be very involved. So we're accepting his resignation, and then this will be advertised on the website as well for filling it and brought back to the board. But it's effective April 27. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number three's a request to approve the lease with the Michigan Tournament Fleet for the rental of golf carts for the summer jazz concert series in the amount of $3,060, contingent upon attorney review.
So move Peterson.
Support.
Motion Peterson, support Row.
Just to clarify, the number is $3,760.
What did I say? I just missed it.
You said 3,060. That's fine.
Oh, what she said.
I want to make sure. It's right on the thing.
Okay. Thank you for that correction. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number four is a request to approve a change order. Number four was STANTEC for the Loom Feather Point Park renovation project in the amount of $11,858, which is budgeted.
So, go ahead, Stan.
Motion Eldridge, support Peterson.
Support Peterson.
Discussion on this, this is, this has been an experience. Loom Feather Park renovation, closed the park to do the renovations, and it was the lowest bidder, which we often take the lowest bidder. Sometimes we, we weren't as familiar with the company when the board, when it was awarded, but there's been a lot of issues with this park improvement. So this is hopefully the final, and we can open up the park after this and complete the project. So it'll be back open, you know, for the public to enjoy. And John, thank you for helping to oversee this with Attorney Winners to help bring this to a conclusion. We have a motion in support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under authorization and bids, we have the request to, oh, budget amendment number three.
I have a motion to amend the budget, the 2023 budget. I would move to increase the bike sidewalk wreck and roads fund budget by $402,275 to $3,334,497, and approve the line item changes as outlined. Move to increase the fire special millage capital fund by $70,000 to $2,199,540, and improve line item changes as outlined. And move to increase the environmental services fund budget by $50,000 to $3,744,633. And also with the understanding that under the budget amendment, there was a line item change number 2, 213-000676012. And that was an appropriation from a prior year, fund balance from MML to be received as revenue. I would so move the budget amendment.
Motion Row?
Support.
Support Eldridge, discussion on the budget amendment. This also includes the contractor, the third-party contractor to assist with the tree chipping. Great challenge that we have. We may have to come back for more, I don't know. So they are working Saturday, they're not working Sunday currently, but they are working Saturday, the professional services. We have a motion support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Authorization and bids. Number one is a request to seek sealed bids for a Ford F-150 for the building department, and that will come back to the township board.
So move.
Motion Row?
Support.
Support Eldridge, discussion. This will be brought back to the township board, and this is for the building department.
Yes, John Hines, Recreation Department. So this was requested by the building department through the Residential Services Department. The F-150 that the senior building inspector has right now is the oldest in their fleet. It was purchased in 2013. And because of its daily use, it's showing a lot of wear and tear. There's a lot of service, a lot of oil leaks going on with it. So they requested to go out to bid to replace that, and it'd be an extended cab, because they would move the cap that's on the truck bed to this new vehicle for their documentations and ladders for the inspections.
Thank you.
Yep.
We have a motion support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number two's a request to award the low bid for playground mulch to superior ground cover budget in line item 101-770-818011.
So move.
Motion Row, support Eldridge. Is there any questions on the mulch award of the bid?
I did want to put a clarification that this was not the lowest bid, it was the second lowest bid, but we've worked with Superior Ground Cover for the past few years. They do a phenomenal job, and, you know, excited to work with them again to get mulch in our playgrounds.
And we do have, in language in our financial policy, that it's, if there's a difference of 15 or 20%, we always go local first, you know, that's for local, Ipsy, Ipsy City and Washoe County. Questions are coming. Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Would you correct the agenda? Remove low bid?
Oh, yeah.
Number three is request to award the low bid for annual sidewalk repair to CLI concrete leveling, which is budgeted.
So move.
Motion Row, support Eldridge.
And so this is a request to now accept the bid for sidewalk repair with CLI. They were the only bid, but they, again, have done this work for us for the past few years. And this is when a resident calls because there is uneven leveling due to tree roots or due to, you know, something going on with wear and tear, where it causes pooling, or any sort of trip hazard, where the RSC team sends out a representative to make sure it is not ADA accessible, then CLI will take that list and repair it for the residents. And the big difference this year is we're going to a two-year agreement instead of a one-year. So this will come back in 2025, not 2024.
Questions are coming. Was this the low bid or the only bid?
This was the only bid. We do contract with another company with the pilot program started last year for sidewalk shaving, but they cannot lift slabs up, they can only shave it to be ADA accessible. So they did not get on the project.
Is this shaving?
No, no, this is raising, yep.
I know that helps a lot. In the more mature neighborhoods, you can shave it off or insert cement that levels it, and you don't have to replace all the flags in it. or insert cement that levels it, and you don't have to replace all the flags in it. And we often, we have a list, people call in with sidewalks that are a trip hazard or concerns, and the contractor always looks three, I think it's three slabs, or...
Yeah, on either side to make sure that it's, they're not leaving anything.
That it doesn't cause any other issues, but greatly needed, and thank you. We have a motion in support for the only bid. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number four is a request to award the low bid for annual sidewalk replacement to Saladino Construction Company, which is budgeted.
Support.
Motion Eldridge, support Row.
Yes, so this is for the sidewalk replacement. So that is when residents call and the sidewalk is crumbling and cannot be lifted or shaved in any repair circumstance. So this was our only bid, but similar to CLI, Saladino has been doing this for the township for the past few years, and they're very prompt in their work. And this is also going to a two-year agreement from a one-year agreement, so it will come back in 2025.
I did notice their, their references were the City of Ann Arbor, Parks and Recreation Ann Arbor, Superior Township, and City of Ypsilanti, Washaw County Road Commission, Water Resource.
They do a lot of work, you know, for our township's side work, as well as some special projects when needed. So again, they do a fantastic job.
And they're often, they're on North Territorial in Ann Arbor, so it's in Washaw County, according to the bid.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would just like to say, too, that when we look at all of these bids, we're able to see other companies that have downloaded the bid documents, which is most important. Like, if you download the bid document, you're likely to actually bid on it. So you can see both lists of who's viewed it and who's downloaded it. And they're, and both of these were, you know, there were quite a few people that downloaded the documents. And I'm just, you know, who knows why they didn't proceed with bidding. So I did want to just share that there were multiple people who reviewed them, looked at them, and just chose to not bid on them.
We have a motion support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There's no other business or member updates. All in favor to adjourn.
So move.
So move, support.
So move, and then stand.
This is on the motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.